Good morning. At this time, I'll call it over to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, June 30. Clerk, please hold the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here. All are present. We do have a quorum. It's really amazing that June has already passed us by after today, but would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. If you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it off or to silent mode so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We do not have any proclamations to present this morning, but we do have a special notice of someone who's retiring from county government, and I'm going to ask the county manager to make comments.
Chairman, thank you. This person is Sean Casterly, and Sean and Tricia are coming forward. I want to say a few words, and then I know the chairman wants to say a few words, and then we'd like Sean to... This is actually his last day. Today is his last day. So I'm trying not to get emotional because Sean is an important part of our executive leadership team, which consists of our 30 department directors and our assistant county managers. And Sean has always provided a very unique perspective that we appreciate and we will miss. As part of the executive leadership team with our culture of high-performance organization focus, we have what's called triads. Sean, Scott, and I were one of those, and we changed it to trio, so we're a trio. But for about 10 years, we had a goal of meeting once a month to really learn from each other and give each other a perspective of how to... Things we're working on and advice for each other. And so Sean, I will miss that, and doesn't mean we still can't have those occasionally. So thank you for your assistance there. The library, the satisfaction of the library services from the community survey, 88 percent. And as far as a matter of perspective, large communities, over 250,000, average 78 percent. So we exceed the national average by far, and continues... The library continues to be top of the satisfaction for our county, and that's in large part due to Sean and his leadership and his team. And so Sean, I just want to say thank you, and we will miss you, and it's been a pleasure working with you. And I do want to ask Sean a question, and maybe he could cover this in his comments, but the comprehensive library master plan was quite the undertaking, and his leadership, working with the library board and his team, and a bunch of county partners and community partners, I was amazed at the approach they took with all the community meetings to get input on what does the future of libraries look like. And I was really inspired about the way that that was done and the way that Sean took that information and worked with all the team members to really set up the library for the future. So when Sean comments, maybe he'll tell me how many public meetings he actually had in that process, if he even remembers. And then also, I recall that there were three or four main tenants that you talked about and what the feedback gave you, and really what you set us up for libraries into the future. And then we saw those in the amazing buildings that we've seen with Lenexa and Monticello and the ones that are being worked on right now. So Sean, I hope you cover that because it was very impactful, and so thank you. So Chairman, I'll turn it back to you for comments, and I'll ask Sean to come forward.
Well, Sean, if you would come to the podium. I do not have a gold watch or anything like that to present to you this morning, but I want to emphasize what the county manager has spoken about, and that is, you know, the three new libraries that we were able to complete under your leadership, Monticello, Lenexa City Center, and now the Miriam Library, and your ability to work with the cities involved and receive support and develop partnerships with those cities, I think was very, very important. I know there's work yet to be done from the comprehensive plan, but you have started an excellent beginning for reviewing the needs of our library system in Johnson County. If there's any comments you'd like to make, and I know perhaps you could introduce the new library director in those comments, would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The first comment I want to make is really to the commission. I want to thank you for your support. You've been wonderful advocates for libraries, and without your vision, this comprehensive library master plan wouldn't have been done. You set this as a task for me and our organization, the board, to come up with a plan and one that you could support, and I'm deeply grateful. I'm also deeply grateful to the county manager's office, Maury, Joe Waters, and Penny, and of course, Joe Conner, which I've got to know, and the finance department with Scott Newfeld. All of you helped us with financing, working with facilities, coordinating this. Your connections with the cities were much stronger than mine, and you, in many instances, helped facilitate that and those partnerships. To answer Penny, you know, we asked the community at the beginning what they needed, and they gave us a long list, and of that list, we had a follow-up question was, what should the library be doing? And it really came down to education. Learning is so important to this community, access to information. They said community building is really important. And then they told us, hey, we have busy lives, so convenience is really great. And so we've taken those kind of three pillars initially and created a strategic plan around them. So again, it is the people's library and something that I'm really proud of this community. On average per capita, this community reads 15 books a year. When you think about the national average, the average American only reads four books a year from various studies. So this is, I think, a smart, tremendously educated community that loves access for information. So Penny, I hope I answered all your questions, but it's really my pleasure now to introduce the next county librarian, which was my deputy, Tricia Swelentrop. Tricia has her professional career has been in libraries. Again, this couldn't have been done so quickly on the capital plan without an amazing administrative team. Tricia brings a passion for this community. She's an author, national award winner as a mover and shaker within the industry, and I couldn't have thought of a better person to take the library into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tricia. Congratulations on your appointment by the library board to this position. Some big shoes to fill, but I know that you've been working hard for some time as a strong member of the management team of the library. So Sean, congratulations. Thank you, and whatever the future holds, good luck and enjoy the retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd just like to say something.
Yes.
So when you started the new comprehensive plan, I think it was like 2010, you came to Roland Park and Mission and talked about the plan would close Cedar Row Library. So we were all shocked, and so I and several others organized several community meetings that were packed out of people did not want to lose their neighborhood library. And in the beginning, you said, no way, we can't keep the Cedar Row. The board said, no way. But I, you know, really appreciate that you listened, the board listened, and you accommodated your plans to keep Cedar Row. Often when there's road shows on comprehensive plans, there's no changes. It's a road show. But it was a true listening, and I was a part of the Miriam input listening session, and you've included the Miriam Community, Mission. Sean, you was very strong about sustainability and renewable energy, and you included that input. So I just wanted to thank you on behalf of Northeast, which loves Cedar Row Library, that you listened to their input.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Good point. I think all of us who were involved in this process, there were starts and steps forward, steps backwards, and a lot of information collected before final decisions were made. So that's part of the process. And again, thank you very much, Sean. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck. Enjoy retirement. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on our agenda, would welcome you to make your comments. Comments are limited to two minutes. Would you please state your name and address before you make your comments? Do we have any virtual comments this morning?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right. We'll begin with the virtual comments, but for those who are speaking in person, there's a modem on the podium that will track your time, and if anyone goes over the two-minute time, then the chair is required to interrupt and ask you to conclude. So with that, we'll begin, if you'll give us the name of the first speaker.
At this time, we have Debbie Detmer. Debbie Detmer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I am Debbie Detmer of Shawnee, Kansas. And Commissioner Allenbrand, why would you call a secret meeting among interested parties to discuss the reconstruction of 199th Street in the southwestern part of the county to accommodate large trucks and 18-wheelers? The 3rd District Commissioner Charlotte O'Hara, critic of the project in which she and others have raised safety concerns, was told of the meeting, then in her words, disinvited later. The Southwest Zoning Board member Kenneth Klinkensmith says he was told by County Commissioner Chairman Ed Ilert, since the Allenbrand meeting was not considered a public meeting, there was no need for his attendance. And also kept away was Resident Frank Moley, also against the project. He recounts what happened. When I got to the administration building, I was informed it was a private meeting, and I was not allowed in, and neither was Commissioner O'Hara. So not only are you, Allenbrand, doing a disservice to one of the seven board members that would mean... That would mean an entire Johnson County District 3 would be denied representation to enact, amend, or repeal local legislation, but you are going against your own campaign promise of transparency. At any time that a majority of an elected body meets and discusses any county business, a public notice must be posted 48 hours prior to the meeting. That means four or more of the following body secretly meeting is a coma violation, and they have to meet and discuss in public anything other than personal or land acquisition. Those are discussed in executive sessions after the opening meeting begins. It must be on the agenda. Any action on voting on such items must be made in public. I believe you have violated the Open Meetings Act. You and Ed Ilert need to publicly explain your actions and who was invited and who was present at these meetings and what was said. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll make a comment later on. Thank you very much.
Now we have Ben Hobart. Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. If someone says vaccines for kids under the age of five lower the risk of severe disease or death, it's important to remember that no data on earth proves that conclusion. This is a quote from University of California San Francisco epidemiologist and clinical trial specialist Vinay Prasad. Note, when questioned by Senator Rand Paul in recent Senate hearings, Dr. Fauci conceded that there are no studies that show a reduction in hospitalization or death for children who take a booster. Parents of Johnson County children, here are questions to ask your pediatrician if you are still considering subjecting your children to the clot shots. Doc, the CDC says approximately 74 percent of children show serial prevalence to COVID-19, suggesting that they have been exposed and have natural immunity. In light of this, why get the clot shots? In both the Moderna and Pfizer Biotech studies for EUA extension to infants under the age of five, the percentages are based on relative efficacy. In fact, in terms of absolute reductions of infectiousness, the percentages are between 1.1 percent and 3.2 percent. Why should my child get the shot, given this limited reduction? The Verbac acknowledged that both the Moderna two-shot series and the Pfizer three-shot primary series will require booster shots because of rapidly decreasing efficacy. In fact, the antibody titers were determined only 30, 35, or 40 days after the last dose. Is there any study that addresses the possible adverse effects of accumulation of spiked proteins after the boosters? Why did the Pfizer application totally disregard all infections prior to dose three or three days after, seven days after dose three? There were 97 infections in the toddler group, 125 in the two-to-four-year-old group, but they were all disregarded. These facts may in fact suggest antibody-dependent enhancement or vaccine-acquired immune deficiency syndrome could be in play. All of these vials were produced and ordered before EUA extension approval was obtained. Doc, isn't this approval process a sham? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have Mary Halasa. Mary Halasa.
Good morning. My name is Mary Halasa. I live in Overland Park and on 142nd Terrace. I am skeptical of the honesty and integrity of our elections. Have our elections been conducted and certified with full adherence to all laws legally in place at that time? A step toward more secure elections would be the elimination of electronic voting and a full return to paper ballots. Paper ballots cannot be connected to the internet, and it cannot be electronically hacked. It is likely that... It has been reported that likely 95 percent of voting machines used in our country in the 2020 election were not legally certified in accordance with the EAC. That's the Election Assistance Commission guidelines. Yet all states certified their 2020 election results. Not a single voting system, testing lab used in 2020 was accredited in accord with laws in place at that time. As of May 2020, at least one of those testing labs had never even been certified and accredited. Any voting equipment certification or audits performed by those unaccredited labs would be legally invalid. The EAC was also responsible for dispersing at least $400 million of taxpayer money to mitigate COVID concerns pertaining to the voting in 2020. Electronic voting equipment can be hacked or, quote, "adjusted" so that we receive dishonest results. We need full assurance only legally cast votes count, and it also appears that Wisconsin, Arizona, Pennsylvania, Georgia, and Michigan will move to decertify their 2020 election results, at least partially based on problems, irregularities with their electronic...
Now we have Keith Lang. Keith Lang.
Thanks for this opportunity. Want to make some couple brief comments about the proposal for possibly having a commercial truck route on 199th Street.
Excuse me, your name and address, please.
Keith Lang and 20125 Canterbury Street.
Thank you.
Willow Bend Ranch is the name of the area. So we live right on 199th Street. The entrance is Canterbury. Across the street is the entrance to Southwick on the lake. Quarter mile, half a mile to the west is Town and Country Estates. All three of these residences, and these are just large communities, and there's a lot of other homes around that area, they all have... 95 percent of these families have young kids. Everybody has bikes, e-bikes, ATVs, golf carts, and they're on their properties. All the properties I've mentioned are two acres or more. And they've got... And they're on the road. They come up and down Canterbury every day. That means they're going to have to cross 199th Street. 199th Street is 45 miles per hour for my entrance. That by itself is ridiculous. And most vehicles are going 50 to 60. I've been passed by commercial trucks on that road. And right now, down the street to the east, they're taking a bunch of topsoil off of somebody's farm, and there's a truck with... Full of dirt every three minutes come down the road, and that's probably what we're going to see if this happens. It's just absolutely ridiculous. In Willow Bend, two of our lots, as you come in, have 600 feet of their property line is on 199th Street. Look, my time is up. Okay, thanks for listening.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now we have Mike Duffield. Mike Duffield.
Good morning. My name's Mike Duffield. I live in Rural Gardner on 207th Street. My exact address is on record here. On June 22nd, at the last Johnson County Board of Commissioners meeting, something took place that really disturbed me. Commissioner O'Hara made a motion that the Johnson County B.O.C.C. sent Attorney General Derek Schmidt a request to give his opinion on Johnson County District Court Judge Vanno's case number 21-CV02184. I believe this is a case of narrow corridor violation of Kansas statute 12-520G. I don't understand why the B.O.C.C. so hastily dismissed the motion. As I understood, Commissioner O'Hara's motion was for the B.O.C.C. to acknowledge citizens of Johnson County, like myself, who would like to know the Kansas Attorney General's opinion on this case and make a determination if the statute was violated. I believe that Commissioner O'Hara was not requesting the B.O.C.C. to make comment on whether or not they agree or disagree with either side, just that they have constituents concerned and like for his office to render an opinion, especially since Judge Vanno made comment this was clearly an illegal annexation and violation of the statutes of Kansas, and it did take place in our county. The B.O.C.C. represents all residents of Johnson County. What happens to one of us in a roundabout way happens to all of us. I understand each commissioner has an area of constituents they feel responsible for. Bottom line is, I feel all of you who sit on our B.O.C.C. have a duty to all Johnson County residents. I commend Commissioner O'Hara in trying to bring forward citizens' concerns on this matter. I request you please reconsider her motion and request that the Kansas Attorney General give his opinion in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, that completes our public comment.
All right. That concludes our public comment. To the first speaker, I would simply say this. It is not unusual for individual commissioners to meet with constituents, staff, experts, engineers, others involved in reviewing items. And in this particular case, or in any particular case, it is up to the commissioner as to who is included in that conversation. And there has been absolutely no violation of any open meeting law. I did not attend, nor did any other commissioner attend the stated meeting that was spoken about. And I myself, and I know other commissioners, have had individual meetings with constituents, and that should continue because sharing information with constituents is part of our responsibility. So I simply reject the conclusion that was raised at that comment. All right. That concludes the public comment portion of our agenda. The clerk will please read the notes for the record.
The chairman noted for the record that he would sign the following. A standard form agreement dated June 13th, 2022 for managing the use and occupancy of public right-of-way with the city of Shawnee as authorized by Resolution Number 110-01 adopted on December 13th, 2001. Two agreements with the city of Lenexa for a storm water system renewal project known as One, Oak Hill Storm Drainage Improvement, and Two, 109th Terrace near Flum. And Administrative Resolution Number WD-22-024 enlarging the privately financed sewer district and provide for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 6850 Melridge Street.
Thank you very much. Turning to our agenda, there are several consent items. Will the clerk please read those?
Item number one, consider approving the June 9th, 2022 business session minutes. Item number two, consider approving the appointment of Chris Talarico, 3rd District Representative, to the Ten Judicial District Nominating Commission through March 2nd, 2026. Item number three, consider approving the appointment of Virgil R. Gleason, 5th District Representative, to the Transportation Council through August 31st, 2025. Item number four, consider approving the appointment of Courtney Craig, 6th District Representative, to the Museum Advisory Council through May 7th, 2025. Item number five, consider approving the appointment of Mary Estrada, 4th District Representative, to the Commission on Aging through August 31st, 2023. Item number six, consider approving the reappointment of Julie Hickman, 5th District Representative, to the Museum Advisory Council through May 7th, 2025. Item number seven, consider approving the reappointment of John S. Witterborn, 5th District Representative, to the Airport Commission through July 31st, 2024. Item number eight, consider ratifying the reappointment of Donald E. Sullivan, Chairman's Representative, to the Investment Review Group through June 22nd, 2024. Item number nine, sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number 2, consider approving a sanitary sewer installation agreement with Southern Meadows LLC and two sanitary sewer easements to connect the fire station at 18475 Mission Road to sanitary sewers at a cost not to exceed $35,401.54 to be paid from the Fire District Number 2 reserve funds. And item number 10, RFP Number 2021-004, consider authorizing a contract with Patagonia Health Incorporated for the purchase of an electronic health records, EHR, solution for the Department of Health and Environment, DHE, in an amount not to exceed $247,320 for a one-year term, including startup implementation costs, with the option to renew the annual subscription for four additional one-year terms.
Thank you very much. Is there a commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? If not, is back before the commission and a motion is in order? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion to approve... Hanslick, second on the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number 11.
Resolution Number 041-22, application number SE21-120-CUPGA. Consider a request from Judd Claussen, Phelps Engineering applicant, on behalf of Jeff Hodge, Concrete Properties landowner, for a conditional use permit for a... landowner, for a conditional use permit for a contractor shop and outdoor storage yard located south of West 199th Street and east of Metcalf Avenue on 1.45 acres, zoned PRB Two, Planned Residential Neighborhood Retail Business District.
Ms. Lineiger, Planning Staff.
Good morning, Michelle Lineiger, Planning Staff. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a contractor shop and outdoor storage yard. It's number 11. As you can see, the subject property is located south of 199th Street and on the east side of Metcalf Avenue. This is the zoning of the property and the surrounding area. The subject property is on PRB Two, which is a planned retail neighborhood business district. Directly to the east is a residential neighborhood, which is developed. Property to the north and south directly of the subject property are currently undeveloped, as is the property across Metcalf on the west. There are a variety of other retail, light industrial, commercial uses along Metcalf. The north, well, southeast corner is a gas station, and then there's a air conditioning contractor just south of there, and then there's various contractors south of the subject property further. Here is the site plan, just to highlight it, a couple details. The proposed building is a one-story, 6,000-square-foot building, which is, well, outlined in blue. The green area is the outdoor storage area, which is set back 50 feet from all property lines as required by the regulations. The north green line is proposed to be a three-foot pipe rail fence to maintain that 50-foot setback for the storage area. Outside of that will be storage for work vehicles. And then surrounding in orange, that will be a six-foot chain-link fence with slats. This will contain that, all, all of that outdoor storage area and provide screening. Additional screening noted on the plan is the circles around it. Those are six-foot evergreen trees that will help address some of the noise that you may get on the outdoor storage area. This is the front building elevation. It's a nice-looking building with a front porch, and then an overhead door, and then there's a front office area. At the June 1st Southeast Zoning Board meeting, the board recommended approval of the conditional use permit subject to stipulations as recommended staff, which includes a 10-year term, dustless surface in the storage area, and revised lighting plan to meet the regulations and the Stillwell lighting guidelines. No members of the public spoke regarding this item, and I can answer any questions, and the applicant is here to answer any questions.
This comes to us with favorable recommendation from the planning staff, as well as the zoning board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Questions by the commissioners. Ms. O'Hara.
Thank you for addressing the lighting issue, because we do have a lighting issue at the used car lot that is just down, down the street that we are working through. And so I'm just, we're, the staff is satisfied that this is not going to create any issues with the lighting, because it is within the, the recommendations of the Stillwell lighting plan. Is that correct?
The applicant did submit a lighting plan. It did not meet either of the Stillwell lighting plan guidelines or the code requirements, so that is a stipulation that they submit a revised lighting plan that meets both of those standards.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And I'm, I have a motion when you are ready.
All right, so noted. Is the applicant present? Any comments, any comments you'd like to make?
We're dear questions.
All right, the record will reflect that the applicant is present, will answer questions. Are there questions of the applicant? All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, it's back before the commission. Ms. O'Hara, you have a motion?
Yes. I move to adopt Resolution Number 041-22, which approves a conditional use permit to allow a contractor shop and outdoor storage yard for a 10-year term on Lot 13, Coventry Estates, Third Plat, for the reasons and subject to the stipulation set forth within the resolution.
Allenbrand, second.
O'Hara made the motion, Allenbrand seconded the motion to approve the resolution, resolution and the application as recommended. Is there any further questions or comments? Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Ms. Lineiger. I had a number of questions last week. You did a great job of addressing those, and I'm supportive of this action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast. Sorry. Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Item number 12.
Resolution Number 044-22, application numbers SE-22-214-REZAU and SE-22-215-PP/FPAU, consider requests from Domino Acquisitions LLC, applicant and landowner, for rezoning of 40 acres from RUR, Rural District, to PRUR, Planned Rural District. A preliminary plat and final plat for five residential lots located northeast of 191st Street and Knoll Avenue in Section 33, Township 14, Range 25.
Ms. Cricks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board of County Commissioners, good morning. Michelle Cricks, Johnson County Planning. And this is a request for approval for a rezoning of approximately 40, 40 acres from the rural district to the planned rural district, a preliminary plat and final plat for five residential lots. First, I'd like to note that this project was recommended for denial by the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board. Planning staff did recommend approval. At that meeting, two motions were made. The first motion was a recommendation of approval, which failed by a vote of three to four. Then a second motion was made for a recommendation of denial, which did pass four to three. The applicant is requesting this item be remanded back to the zoning board for further consideration. As you can see here on the slide, the subject property is located northeast of 191st and Knoll. Here is an aerial of the subject property. The lot is currently vacant and used for agricultural purposes. The eastern boundary of this property is bordered by the Union Pacific Railroad. The topography characteristics of the site slopes from the north and the south to kind of meet in the middle of the property where water is collected and does convey off to the east into the Camp Branch Creek, which runs there along the east property line. The east end of the subject property is also located within the 100-year floodplain associated with the creek. Here is a surrounding zoning. As noted on the slide, the subject property is surrounded by rural residential and neighborhood, residential neighborhood one district. The planned rural district requested by the applicant requires a density of one dwelling unit per 10 acres, which is similar to the density prescribed in the rural, the rural district. However, under the planned rural district, a bonus lot is allowed for every 30 acres, and would allow minimum lot sizes down to four acres. Therefore, for this application, the PRUR zoning designation would allow five residential lots on the 40-acre property. Here is what the proposed final plat. The proposed lots would have access from a new local street from Knoll Avenue. The applicant is also showing a street right-of-way connection to the lot north of the subject property, which is recommended for future street connectivity in this area if the adjacent lot is divided for future development. At this time, that proposed road, which is called Rosewood Street, would not be constructed all the way to the north property line, and the applicant is proposing a turnaround with a temporary easement on the final plat. The final plat does comply with all the required zoning and subdivision regulations, except for the infrastructure waiver requested by the applicant. The Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board heard this project at the June 1st meeting, and two people from the public spoke on the item. The zoning board recommended denial for three reasons. First, the proposed development was not consistent with the existing character of the neighborhood. The subdivision, they didn't feel the subdivision was appropriate in this area. And three, that the proposed Rosewood Street connection was an assumption on future development. As I've already stated, the applicant is requesting this item be remanded back to the zoning board. The briefing sheet provided to the B.O.C.C. today does provide two motions to consider. If the B.O.C.C. does concur with the zoning board's recommendation, then a motion to adopt the resolution to deny the application as provided. However, if the B.O.C.C. wants the zoning board to reconsider this item, there is also a motion remanding the matter back to the zoning board. The applicant is here today and available for questions. And that concludes my comments, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, I want to emphasize the, the process. This comes to us with a denial by the zoning board, and the commissioners can't agree with that, or can't send it back for further consideration.
That's correct.
If it goes back to the zoning board, the zoning board recommendation would it come back to the commission, and the commission could accept or make any decision they want the second time it comes before us. Specifically, why does, why are, why does the applicant want this to go back? What items are going to be spoken to?
They would like to maybe have a chance to take another look at the project and see if there's maybe some adjustments to address some concerns raised by the zoning board and the neighbors that came to spoke on the item.
Okay, all right. Questions, Ms. O'Hara.
Yes, I support remanding this back to the, the zoning board. The conversations I've had is that most likely this can be worked out, and so I do support remanding it back, and I have a motion to that effect when you're ready.
All right. Other questions? Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've, I've read through the transcript of the zoning board meeting, as well as the information from staff, and it, it seems that this proposed project is technically consistent with our county rural zoning designations in the area. But it, I would like to have everyone be happy with, with the outcome, so I would agree that remanding it back is appropriate.
Ms. Allenbrand.
Mr. Chair, I would support that as well.
All right, well, let's get some comments first, before we have a motion. Is the applicant present? Any comments you'd like to make, sir?
Yeah.
All right, but you are requesting to go back?
Yeah.
And specifically, what, what, what do you hope to review or to accomplish?
Sir, if you're going to speak, could you please come to the podium?
Yeah, I think you can come to the podium.
For the mic.
I'm Rick Trumbull. I'm a member of Domino Development, a member of Stillwell, Kansas. You know, our hope was to try to slide this with what we submitted first, and that if not, we're certainly negotiable to try to come up with a different plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item?
Yes, sir. We have Tim Hickock.
Okay, very good. Yes, please.
Tim Hickock, 18601 Knoll Avenue. This project has no neighborhood support. That's partly why it failed at the lower commission. And granted, we're all senior citizens, and we don't want to see change a little bit. We, we understand that progress has to happen. I think this type of progress is not appropriate at this time. Maybe when there's sewers out there, the, the, the neighborhood is Knoll. It's, it's kind of unique. Across from this is, is Evergy, which has 160 acres. That's never going to be developed. On the corner, we have 40 acres and one house. The subject property has no houses. It's, it's not quite 40 acres, it's 39.4 acres. We have 55 acres with one house next to that. We have my house to the north of that, which has 30 acres and one house. And then we have another 60-acre tract going up to 183rd Street that has no houses. So it's a drastic change to put in five houses. And the five houses is not on three, it's, it's not really functionally on 39.4 acres. The back half of this property is unusable. So it's, it's, it's going to be five houses on 20 acres. So that's, that's not like the neighborhood. I would request that you not remand it. I think, I speak for a lot of the neighbors, we'd like to be done with it. And we think an upzone is not appropriate. There are things he can do with the present zoning, and we'd like to see him maybe explore that stuff. That's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. Is there someone else?
Yes, now we have James Chalfont.
And again, I'd ask you to keep your comments to two minutes.
My name is Jim Chalfont. I live at 18755 Knoll Avenue. I had joined this proposed development on the north. I pretty much endorse, well, I totally endorse everything that Tim Hickock just said. It just doesn't keep in the character of, of the neighborhood, and plus the fact as, I think the zoning, one of the reasons that they turned it down is the fact that the current, the proposed plan had a tangent road that came over to my property line that would kind of predetermined how my property would be developed in the future. I have no plans. I hope my next move is to newcomers. I have no plan on moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, now we have Mike Musburger.
My name is Mike Musburger. I live at 18600 Knoll. And like my neighbors, we oppose this, this new project. We moved to Stillwell some 35 years ago because of the rural community and the environment that we have out there today. And as I said, this is inconsistent with our neighborhood and the area, and we oppose this, this new development. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Sir, that completes the ones that, that have signed up.
Again, I'll ask, is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this item who has not spoken? All right, the item is back before the commission. Ms. O'Hara.
Yes, and, and I, I just want to let the commissioners know that I had some email communication with Mr. Chalfont on this issue. And so I just wanted to make that public information.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have, I do have a motion to remand it back.
All right. Go ahead.
I move to remand the two applications back to the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board for reconsideration, for the purpose of having zoning board consider and discuss the rezoning preliminary plat and final plat using recognized land use criteria. Furthermore, the zoning board shall reconsider its recommendation and take action thereon with, within 90 days of receipt of the remanded applications.
Hanslick, second.
O'Hara made the motion, Commissioner Hanslick seconded the motion to return this item to the zoning board for, for further consideration. I would simply make this comment, in, in this kind of process where the applicant has indicated they want to review the plan and perhaps make changes, and we respect the comments of those who are concerned about this issue, but perhaps there is an opportunity to resolve the concerns. I don't know, but that's one reason for sending it back to the zoning board. I don't know, but that's one reason for sending it back to the zoning board. So I will vote for that under those circumstances. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Allenbrandt?
Mr. Chair, I would also hope that in sending this back, that the owner developer gets with these residents to take a look at what their concerns are, so I will support that to go back if the conversations are still going.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, the motion to return this to the planning commission for additional review is before us. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrandt?
Allenbrandt, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. Motion carried. Can staff give us an idea of when this will be reconsidered by the zoning board? The date, time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This application is being remanded back to the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board for further consideration and will be heard at their next regularly scheduled meeting on August 3, 2022, here in this room at 111 South Cherry Street.
Okay. So it will be August 3 for the next hearing on this item?
Correct. Yeah, that could possibly change if the applicant requests maybe a continuance, so I do recommend the public kind of watch the website just to confirm that date and the agenda.
Okay. All right. Well, I would make this request to those who have spoken this morning, if you could send a written communication with the agenda so that they're fully apprised of the information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Next item.
Item number 13. Sitting as the Fire District Number Two Governing Board, consider authorizing the publication of a proposed budget for Johnson County Fire District Number Two in the amount of $9,379,712 for fiscal year 2023, notifying the county clerk of the proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and setting a public hearing on the proposed budget for Thursday, August 25, 2022, at 9:30 a.m. in the board chambers.
Chief Francis?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairmen. Jim Francis, Fire Services Administrator. Here today, you're sitting as the Fire District Governing Body to note, make notification of the public hearing and the revenue neutral rate for the Fire District Two's 2023 budget. That public hearing would be on August the 25th. The Fire District would come back to the Board of County Commission on September 1st. So let me take a minute and go through this proposed budget. So Fire District Number Two had an approximate 12% increase in assessed valuation, up to $305 million assessed valuation. Included in this, Fire District Two is anticipated to contract again with Spring Hill next year, proposing a 7% increase to that contract. We also have a five-year agreement with Miami County Fire District Number Two in the works that will soon come before you. That is a 10% increase to that contract in '23, and a 6% the remaining years after that. The ad valorem taxes and the tax rate, $4,462,261. In the general fund, that's a 14.621 proposed tax rate. The current general fund levy is 16.111, so it's a reduction in the general fund levy of 1.49 mils. The debt service on the 2015 bond, $232,304. That's a slight reduction in that mil levy of .114. And then if you recall, last December, a new bond issue was approved for the fleet replacement of the fire apparatus that's been ordered. So that new bond will collect a mil levy for that in 2023. That's presently coming out of the general fund this year, that payment. So that's $361,539 with a proposed tax rate of 1.185. So the total proposed mil levy we anticipate is 16.564, which is a reduction of .419 mils. So I prepared an illustration of what, what a reduction of .419 mils would look like. I used a couple of Fire District properties. Of course, this all depends on what their assessed valuation increase was from year to year, but you know, Commissioner O'Hara last week asked to illustrate the cost of a $500,000 home. So I can't, I found a couple that are close to that. So one home in the 9200 block of West 193rd Terrace, current assessed valuation is $56,132. The appraised value of that home was $488,100. So the, their taxes were $953.30. Under this proposed budget, adding the bond I or bond, the 2021 bond, reducing the general fund but adding that new bond debt, their proposed tax rate would be, or taxes would be $982.73, which is an increase in $29.43 for that particular homeowner. I have another home in the 6400 block of West 194th Street. That appraised value is $465,820, which the new appraised value is $487,970. So you can see the difference in taxes there, 909.80 to 929.53, so a difference of increase in taxes of $19.73. So the expenditures for the Fire District's budget, you know, as we're now under contract with Overland Park and Fire District One, that's the lion's share of the expenses. The Overland Park agreement, the budget for that is $2,815,000. The Fire District One agreement is $2,835,000 for the operations agreement. We have a separate code enforcement agreement, which is a little over $19,000. So the total contracts with Fire District One, $2,854,097. And then the remaining expenses, Fire District Two pays, just to let you know, Fire District Two pays utility bills, upkeep on the buildings. Those are not contractual monies. So that's roughly $404,120. And then the $2,553,482 is capital outlay or our reserve fund. And I should note that part of our CIP for next year was to replace approximately 40 sets of firefighter turnout gear, which, like everything else, is getting very pricey. So $145,000 is to replace turnout, and that's on a five-year rotation. So as you can see, the total operating expense, not including reserves, is $6,218,217. Use of the fund balance or reserves is $2,553,482. Debt service, $608,13. Total budget authority, $9,379,712. And there's the turnout gear that I mentioned, the 40 sets and the cost for that. I stand for any questions?
Chief, let me emphasize, the information that you gave, the taxes on those two specific properties, that's Fire District only.
Correct.
That does not include any of the other taxing jurisdictions?
No other taxes included on that.
Right. Thank you. I wanted to emphasize that. Also, the action this morning is simply to set the public hearing? Is that correct?
Correct, and to notify the clerk of the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Other question, other questions? All right. Is there anyone? Excuse me, Ms. Ashcraft.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Francis, notice I did not call you chief. It's going to be a transition, but Mr. Francis, thank you for your presentation. Question that comes up in my mind is, we've had discussions about the relative efficiency of having multiple departments and consolidating that in some fashion, and this effort is a step in that direction. But the premise of that is that there would be an efficiency realized, a savings for taxpayers. And I appreciate the four and a quarter basis point reduction, but I would be interested in seeing what the long-term projections are in terms of savings that we will anticipate or hope for, given this consolidation step. So if we could do that before the hearing, I would appreciate that.
Early.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Ashcraft's comments, and Chief Francis knows that that was one of my main concerns, that the tax rates and the property tax wasn't going to become so burdensome that, that it was just going to become difficult for people to afford to live out there as far as the property taxes. So I appreciate you giving me all this information, and yes, but I would also like to understand the future, because I just don't, I just don't want to squeeze being put on these folks to think, to be forced into annexation. So, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right. If not, it's back for the commission. A motion would be in order to authorize or to establish the date for the public hearing. Do I hear such a motion? Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board, sitting as the Fire District Number Two Governing Board, authorize the publication of a proposed budget for Johnson County Fire District Number Two in the amount of $9,379,712 for fiscal year 2023.
Allenbrandt, second.
I'm not, I'm not done, sorry. There's more. There's more. That the board notify the county clerk of the proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rates for the Fire District Number Two, and that the board set the public hearing on the proposed budget for Thursday, August 25, 2022, at 9:30 a.m. in the board chambers.
Allenbrandt, second.
Hanslick made the motion. Allenbrandt seconded a motion to set the public hearing and notify the clerk of the revenue neutral status of the proposed budget. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrandt?
Allenbrandt, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Sure. Go ahead.
I just want you to know, Chief Francis, this trying to get out the door, is going to be leading the parade in Stillwell on a fire truck, so you might want to stay tuned that we have a celebrity among us.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Okay. Next item.
Item number 14. Resolution number WD-22-016, conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funds for the construction phase of the Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Wastewater Treatment Facility Natural Gas Distribution and Heating Improvements Project IMB-1-Contract 36 in an amount not to exceed $1,844,000.
Ms. Pecariq, the public hearing is open.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pecariq with Wastewater. The Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Wastewater Treatment Facility is located in Overland Park near 69 Highway and College Boulevard. We've got that shown here on the map. Oops. See here, College running across the top there and 69 running along the west. The plant's outlined here in a yellow boundary. The plant has, the wastewater treatment facility has an underground hot water loop piping system that was installed in 1982, so with the original facility. It's been expanded and modified over the years as the plant has also expanded. The hot water loop runs throughout the facility. It provides process heat to the digesters as well as heat for a majority of the buildings there on the campus. The loop has been repaired several times over the years, and HDR Engineering performed an alternative analysis to evaluate the hot water loop and determine what the least cost solution was going forward, and that is to abandon the hot water loop piping for the building heat and install natural gas to heat the buildings. This project represents the first step in a phased approach to abandoning the hot water loop by installing a natural gas line to every building. At this time, we'll only be converting four buildings on the hot water loop to natural gas or electric heating. These improvements were determined based on the condition of the heating equipment. The remainder of the buildings will be transferred over to natural gas as the systems in those buildings reach the end of their useful life. In addition, three of the buildings will be receiving ventilation upgrades that are needed. Project bids were opened on May 26. The award of the construction contract is the next agenda item. The requested amount is $1,844,000. Engineering construction phase services will be provided by GBA that was previously selected through an RFP process for work of this type. And this project was included in our financial plan, which was presented to the board earlier this month, most recently earlier this month. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Ms. Pecariq, Ms. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pecariq, given the volatility in natural gas prices, what are you anticipating to be the lifecycle savings for this changeover?
Good question. So we did do an analysis and estimated about a $700,000 savings. If you look, we did a sensitivity analysis, understanding that the market can be volatile, and still estimate a $500,000 savings going this math.
Is that per year or per?
Excuse me, that's over the 20-year lifecycle, sorry.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If there's no one to be heard, the public hearing is closed, and the item is back before the commission. Do I hear a motion? Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board adopt resolution number WD-22-016, authorizing funds for the construction phase of the Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Wastewater Treatment Facility Natural Gas Distribution and Heating Improvements Project IMB-1-Contract 36 in an amount not to exceed
Allenbrandt, second.
Hanslick made the motion to approve the request in regards to the funding on the Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Plant for the construction as recommended, and Allenbrandt seconded the motion. Is there any further questions or comments? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrandt?
Allenbrandt, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 15. Invitation for bid number 2022-033. Consider authorizing a contract with Stanger Industries Incorporated to construct the Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Wastewater Treatment Facility Natural Gas Distribution and Heating Improvements Project IMB-1-Contract 36 in an amount not to exceed $1,398,000.
Ms. Pecariq?
Thank you, Chairman. Susan Pecariq with Wastewater again. The details of this project were presented under the previous agenda item. Project bids were opened on May 26. The project was advertised in the local newspaper and posted on the county's electronic bidding site, Ionwave, as well as on the Drexel Tech Plan Room. There were 11 firms that reviewed the invitation for bid. Three firms attended the pre-bid site visit. We did receive one bid from Stanger Industries, and that was below the engineer's opinion of probable cost. GBA, who is the design engineer, reviewed the bid and does recommend Stanger Industries for award. Wastewater staff agrees with that recommendation. Stanger's performed work for the county previously. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Ms. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pecariq, one clarification, the, I don't know how you pronounce the acronym, but the engineer's opinion of- engineer's opinion of probable construction cost, is that the sensitivity analysis that you referred to in the previous item, on the previous item?
No, sir. The sensitivity analysis I referred to previously was taking into account the equipment and the capital costs for installing that equipment, and then the operating costs over the 20-year lifecycle.
Okay.
So that's why the numbers are different. And the number I, the estimate I was providing previously included the lifecycle cost estimate.
Okay, thank you.
As well as the capital cost, which is what this is.
Any other?
And also, this bid includes some additional, includes the ventilation improvements that I mentioned previously.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right, if not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize a contract with Stanger Industries, Inc., to construct the Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Wastewater Treatment Facility Natural Gas Distribution and Heating Improvements Project IMB-1-Contract 36 in an amount not to exceed one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars per invitation for bid number 2022-033.
Allen Brand, second.
Hanslick made the motion. Allen Brand seconded the motion to approve the contract with Stanger Industries, Inc., as recommended. Any further questions or comments? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Item number sixteen. Invitation for bid IFB number 2022-013, consider authorizing a contract with professional moving and storage for delivery services of voting equipment and supplies at a cost not to exceed one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a period of 12-month time, with the option to renew said contract for four additional 12-month periods at the same specifications and terms and conditions.
Mr. Sherman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Fred Sherman, Johnson County Election Commissioner. This is one of two action items I have on the agenda for you for today for consideration. This first one is approval of a contract for our delivery services. Each year prior to the elections in both August and November, if there's any special poll elections, we have the equipment, the election equipment, and all polling sites delivered to the various polling sites, typically done a week or two before Election Day, and also a week before for the advanced sites. This process or service has been outsourced for decades. It's a very defined period of time where we need to peak a number of trucks and staffing. We did basically reauthorize or re-put it out to bid again. The old contract was based off of about a 10- or 15-year structure, where we had different equipment, different situations in the aspect of it. So we did put it out to bid. Almost 856 firms were, presented the information. They were reviewed by 10 firms. One firm did bid on it, which is the firm that has provided it in the past. So we're presenting that option to you today to approve the contract to the one, one company that has provided the bid for the services. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions. Ms. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sherman, so if my math is correct, it's about $90,000 in election? Is that how the cost to move equipment in and out?
Little less than that. Our polling site numbers have kind of come down through the years. We're going to have 146 Election Day polling sites. We've also consolidated a number of things into cage carts. The previous contract was based on a per-item basis, so each case, each poll pad was an individual one, and we're able to consolidate it down. But I think you're in the ballpark for the cost.
Very good. Now, it says 10 firms reviewed. Were those 10 firms in the business of doing this work, and you're satisfied that this vendor is the best, only option available?
Probably the latter. That statement, right now, it's the only option available to us. They have provided this service in the years past. They're very familiar with our operations. We're familiar with them. Ideally, we would have liked to have a more competitive bidding process, but it's a very tight labor market, very difficult economy, and we have a very refined timeframe we need this service in. So I think some of the firms that have looked at this passed on it, given some of the parameters. We want to make sure that this vendor is kept whole, that it is compensated and cover its costs, because if this vendor were to not provide this service, we would be in a difficult situation in terms of getting these things delivered. So we are comfortable with this bid and the situation that's being provided to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Again, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I move to authorize a contract with professional moving and storage for delivery services of voting equipment and supplies at a cost not to exceed one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a period of 12-month time, with the option to renew said contract for four additional 12-month periods at the same specifications and terms and conditions per IFB 2022-013.
Allen Brand, second.
Myers made the motion to approve. Allen Brand seconded the motion to approve the contract with professional moving and storage for election purposes as recommended. Any further questions or comments? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number seventeen. Consider authorizing an exception to competition and contract renewal for the election office to purchase election-related printing and mailing services from Sea Change Print Innovations, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $600,000 in FY 2022, per administrative policy and procedure number 110.180.a.16.
Mr. Sherman.
The second item for consideration today is basically approving the expenditure cap or ceiling for services we utilize by a vendor to do a lot of our mailing and processing of the mail ballots. We outsource this service to Sea Change, which is a vendor that has provided this service in past election years as well. It was a company that was kind of spun off from the original parent company of ESNS when the contract was originally provided and set up to it. Again, this is a fairly critical service that's provided, in that we are able to outsource basically the printing, processing, and mailing of not every one of our mail ballots, but the vast majority of them done early on. Once we reach a certain timeframe for this particular election, we will convey the data this, tomorrow on July 1st and July 8th, and then any requests made after that, we process in-house. So this contract before you is really to allow us to establish kind of a ceiling or cap amount of expenditure for this contract in the FY 2022 election cycle for both the August and November elections. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions. Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Just a question about Sea Change. Are they, are they the company that provide all of the paper products that we need for the elections? It seems to me we've, their name has come up before, and they do provide the other, the ballots and a lot of the other paper things. Am I remembering that correctly?
Sort of. So Sea Change became the vendor when they were, when this service was kind of spun off from ESNS. ESNS is the parent vendor that basically provides all the election equipment and materials. Originally, they were a part of it in terms of outsourcing service, and they put it out. So in Johnson County, every voter who cast a ballot does so on a paper ballot, whether you request it by mail, or if you vote in person, either on Election Day or in an advanced site. In fact, voters have a choice of whether they want to do a traditional paper ballot, where they take a pen or a pencil and fill in an oval, or if they use the touchscreen device, the express vote. That produces its own medium or own ballot stock as well, in a different format. Those particular paper supplies are provided by ESNS. So Sea Change does the printing of the mail ballots, which is going to be a traditionally-sized paper ballot. And again, we do purchase ballot stock, traditional eight-and-a-half, this was actually eight-and-a-half, 14 this August election. That is, again, typically purchased by ESNS.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman, and I appreciate your clarifying, contrary to some other information we heard earlier today, that people can vote on a paper ballot, and in fact, whether you use the machine, or you use a paper pencil or pen, you will get a paper ballot that you then submit as you're, as you're, as you're voting. So thank you for that clarification.
Ms. O'Hara?
Oh, thank you. Yes, since we're discussing the ballots, I will just note that Tuesday, when we did our canvas, that there were six ballots that the signatures could not be verified and that they were not counted. And, and this was in the DeSoto Sales Tax election. And then when we did the canvas for the Olathe Bond, School Bond issue, there were 162 ballots that the signatures could not be verified. And in, when I was questioning you, asking questions on Tuesday, you indicated that, yes, indeed, you had forwarded complaints to the District Attorney's Office on some of these ballots that could not be verified, to make sure that there is not fraud. So when you, I would like to know, in the past, since 2020, how many complaints that you have forwarded to the DA, and what the results of those complaints were?
Okay, I'll work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sherman, thank you for your presentation. I always have a sensitivity about the exemption from competition issue. So how do we know there is only one vendor that is able to provide this service? And to make sure that we are getting market rates? And I know, I know there are supply chain issues and COVID issues, there are lots of things that impact this, but what is our assurance that we are getting a market rate here?
So valid question, and this can go out for, and probably does need to go out for bid in, for future timeframes. Under state law, there is an exemption provision for mailing of ballots, so that is a state provision that we can fall within. There are probably other companies out there that can provide this service. This is not one we probably just want to just willy-nilly put it out there and go with a low vendor. We want to have.
Fair point.
Clearly, some checks and balances and references checks, because, you know, we do not want mistakes made in terms of processing the ballots. So I think your question is a fair question that needs to be teed up and evaluated and put out for bid, just like we did for the delivery services. But for this particular fiscal year and election cycle, we need to stick with this vendor, given the timing list of where we're at in the elections.
Fair point. One follow-on, Mr. Chairman. I also had some sensitivity about the amount, the 600,000, and I asked Mr. Sherman about that last, last week. So, Mr. Sherman, I'll direct this to you, but if you want to pivot this to Mr. Newfeld, please feel free. When we put monies for a particular project in, to an account, a line item, are those funds restricted, or can they be moved around between line items?
Let me see if I can take a gander at that request. You know, the election budget, Johnson County has done a fabulous job in terms of providing a budget and resources for elections. And our ebb and flow cycle really varies, not year to year, but in two- and four-year cycles. The presidential election years are typically the largest elections. The even-year ones, like this year, this current year with the gubernatorial ones, are usually large, but the odd number ones are smaller. And instead of trying to get down to specific line item details of every little expenditure, the election budget, for the most part, is very reflective of those two- and four-year cycles. So we appreciate the county's budget authority and the staff's oversight in terms of providing budgets to the, to the election office, but we do try to maintain the cost as best as we can. But to a certain extent, we're dependent upon the request made. So this particular issue and item before you is going to be completely dependent upon how many voters request a mail ballot. We have very little control over that expenditure and need to provide the services, whether they're done in-house, and those costs are absorbed through probably not a direct line item, but probably in a similar vein, or whether they're outsourced to a vendor like this.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. But my question is, the ability to move funds that's, that are designated for this type of expenditures to a different type of expenditure, is that possible, or is it, is it restricted to a certain chart of accounts classification and can only be used in that area?
Scott Newfeld, and I'm going to go with the Budget Office on this one. We have controls for salary and benefits, and then for contractual commodities and other operating expenses. So those are the control boxes. So there is flexibility to, say, go between contractual commodities or different lines. So that flexibility is there for the departments, agencies, and offices. So the control boxes that require county manager sign-off are if you maybe go from an employee to a contractual services agreement or vice versa, then that requires sign-off to move funds to and from the salary and benefits. But there is flexibility on those individual line items that you're talking about.
So this is a commodity item, and this amount will be used for the election, as Mr. Sherman has indicated, but if monies are not needed, it could be moved to another line item?
Yeah, we do not micromanage at that level. Our executives are expected to make decisions and be flexible and adaptable. If prices go up or down, as long as we're in good shape overall, that's, that's how we manage it and control it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one other piece that I think is important to this. This $600,000 authority that the Election Commissioner is seeking is not necessarily county dollars. He needs the authority to expend dollars on, with this vendor, but those, many of those dollars will be coming in for special elections and that sort of thing that are often done by cities and school districts that are paying for that. So they, we will receive the full reimbursement for that, but we need the authority here to, to go, go make these, these purchases associated with those special elections.
Okay, thank you. You know, I would simply say this, you know, making sure that the vendor does an outstanding job, an excellent job, on printing the mail ballots. Heaven forbid we should have a bunch of ballots sent out that is missing important, critical information. So the performance of this vendor previously, I think, is, is important to making sure that we have a correct mail ballot being sent out. Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on the question about the signatures and give you the opportunity to confirm that whenever there is a question about a signature, your office makes every attempt possible to contact that voter so that they can come in and fix or cure that situation. So would you like to speak to that?
That is correct. You know, through the process, in fact, the elections that Commissioner O'Hara was referring to were all mail ballot elections. When a jurisdiction chooses to do a special mail ballot, ballots are sent to every registered voter in that jurisdiction. For this August and November election cycle, the mail ballots are only sent to those who make an application to request a mail ballot, and that application goes through a signature verification process. So if we can't verify the signature on that application, again, we contact the voter, try to cure it. If we can't cure it, it goes sent out as provisional, and again, goes through an additional curing process. So both under state law and the Kansas election standards, it's fairly well-defined in terms of how and to the, what extent we contact the voter, and those are being refined and actually elevated even as we speak, so that aspect of it. But yes, we do contact every voter in an effort to cure their ballot or verify the signature process.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take this opportunity to make a comment. I've had a couple of emails, and I responded to, and then we had a speaker this morning about election concerns, and I think most of those concerns are generated from other places and other jurisdictions around the country. But... around the country. But as far as Johnson County is concerned, our electronic-touch voting machines are not connected to the Internet. And if you use one of those machines, you get a printed ballot that you can verify that the machine has recorded your vote accurately. When you scan that ballot, the count is made, and the ballot is kept. And so, if there's any questions, you can do an audit of the ballot and the count of the electronic machine. If you go in to vote and the poll pad does not have your name as a registered voter, you'll get a provisional ballot. And that ballot will be checked and rechecked for, to make sure that you are a registered voter. If you are, it'll be counted. If you have no registration, then it will not be counted. And as was said earlier, if you go in and prefer a paper ballot, that will be provided. So, there are checks and balances, and much of the information about the Internet, et cetera, et cetera. Our system is not connected to the Internet. It's separate, standing alone. So, any other questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you. So, how do we keep record of who has requested an advanced ballot? How is that, how is that record kept? Is it?
The requests are made on a form. Typically, they're mailed in or emailed in electronically. Each one is printed. We process each one. In fact, we have a number of temporary seasonal staff right now going through kind of the batch of applications we have right now for the August election. People for this upcoming election can make a request up to July 26, believe it or not. So, the application is physically in hand. It's processed. That voter information's pulled up. That signature is verified. If they are processed and it matches, they get kind of queued up to receive a ballot. And all those application forms are also kept on file.
Okay. So, and so then electronically, we keep track of that also?
Through the state voter registration system, yes.
Okay. And so, what has the request for ballots been typical for a midterm primary election?
I know the November numbers a little better, you know. And again, this particular election cycle has, is going to be a little bit of a wild card in terms of turnout. I think it's going to be exceedingly higher than most typical primaries, given some of the ballot measures that's on it for all of them. Generally, if you look at 2016 and 2018 numbers, those midterm elections and presidential elections, Johnson County averaged about 45,000 mail ballots for those November elections. 2020 was a much different year with the pandemic and those kind of things. We, about three times the number, had 150,000. Thus far, the number of mail ballot requests that we've received is probably under my expectations. We're probably in the 10,000 to 12,000 range right now.
Okay.
But still several weeks to go.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, I just wanted to, excuse me, let you know that I've had actually a number of constituents who have been very complimentary to the election office, particularly for the expansion of the advanced voting locations, and are very happy that in Johnson County, we have so many different options to vote. We can do advanced mail-in ballot. We can do advanced voting in person, voting on Election Day. And they are very grateful for those options. So, thank you. And I told them I would share that with you.
Thank you.
It's been a while. Do we have a motion on this item?
I have one other question.
I'm asking the clerk, is there a motion on this item yet?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Ms. O'Hara.
Just on the temporary help that we have in analyzing the requests for the mail-in ballot, how are those people vetted for those positions? What's the criteria of their employment for this?
So, they go through the review by myself and my staff. They are sworn-in board members for the signature verification aspect. We do have a set criteria and training process we put them through as well. And it's not just relying on one person. We have kind of a, for no better term, food chain of reviews. So, if it is challenged or not put in place, we have a, it's elevated to another level of staff, people that look at it and evaluate it before it's determined if it's officially challenged or not.
Do we have a balance of political parties in this? Because I know that people that we do have that balance on the drop boxes when people, when the folks go out and collect the ballots at the, at the drop boxes. Do, and I mean, right now, in Johnson County, I think it's approximately, the registration is close to a third, a third, a third, Republicans, Democrats, and unaffiliated. And so, are the unaffiliated voters, do they, do they get any consideration, or is it, yeah, I just, so do we have a balance as far as the political parties and these people that are, that are looking at the ballot requests?
Yes, we do. They're pretty much reflective of the county at large, Democrats.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there, excuse me, Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been some time ago, but I actually worked at the election office, and it is quite the process to go through when you work there. So, it is a swearing in and a training. So, with that, Mr. Chair, when you're ready, I have a motion.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, motion is in order. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize an exemption to completion to contract renewal for election office to purchase election-related printing and mailing services from C. Change Print Invitations LLC to the amount not to exceed $600,000 in FY 2022 per administrative policy and procedure, number 110.180.a16.
Do I hear a second?
Myer, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Myer seconded the motion to approve the contract with C. Change Print Innovations LLC in the amount recommended. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm supportive of this item, given that the assurances from Mr. Sherman that in the future, not this election cycle, but in the future, we will be looking at a more robust bid consideration. And I do, I have had some hesitancy because this, I asked last week how the $600,000 number was arrived at. Mr. Sherman confessed that it may be higher than absolutely necessary, but given Mr. Waters' explanation, I'm satisfied with going forward.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items on the action agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Moving to report and communications, Ms. Post Oak Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. First item on the manager's memo, we have Dan Robison, Deputy Director of Emergency Management, and it's on. And Trent Pittman, Assistant Director of Community Preparedness, will be giving a presentation regarding outdoor warning sirens program. So, with that, Dan?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Dan Robison with Emergency Management Division in the Department of Emergency Services. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you an overview of our activities to prepare for and respond to severe weather events, most importantly, the tornadic activity. As you know, Johnson County is at risk from tornadoes, and what we do about that risk matters as individuals, households, and organizations, and the community as a whole. And because of that, for over half a century, the county and the cities have worked together to coordinate a number of different activities, including public education campaigns and public messaging specific to severe weather preparedness, and also leveraging outdoor warning sirens and other technologies and methods to ensure that the public can remain weather-aware and storm-ready. Our ultimate goal is to provide people the information that they need before, during, and after a disaster, to ensure that they can take the precautions that they need to, to save lives and prevent injury. To start us off, I will turn this over to Trent Pittman, who's our Assistant Director of Operations, and he'll provide an overview of our outdoor warning siren system.
Good morning, Trent Pittman, Department of Emergency Services. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an overview of the outdoor warning sirens in Johnson County. The outdoor warning sirens are designed to primarily alert people who are outside of tornadic and potentially tornadic activity. Now, I say tornadic because in Johnson County, the outdoor warning sirens are only activated for tests and tornadoes. When people hear the sirens, we appeal to them to seek shelter and look for additional information from a trusted source. The outdoor warning sirens are an important and trusted alerting tool, but they are only one component of a much larger alerting system that includes notified JOCO, wireless emergency alerts, weather radios, as well as local media and other trusted sources. We also encourage everyone to have multiple methods of receiving severe weather information, including at least one automated method of receiving that information. The outdoor warning siren system in Johnson County is currently made up of 215 individual sirens. Those sirens are owned and maintained by the individual jurisdictions. In Johnson County, that is primarily the cities. However, one township, as well as Johnson County Parks and Rec and the Johnson County Airport Commission, also own and maintain several sirens. Those 215 sirens are split into five different zones to allow for more precise alerting to occur. Now, Johnson County Emergency Management has the primarily, or primary responsibility for activating these sirens during severe weather. And we've worked with the jurisdictions in Johnson County, as well as with partners from across the region, to ensure that our testing and alerting policies are in line with the regions. Now, as I mentioned before, Johnson County, in Johnson County, the sirens are only activated for tornadic activity. And we utilize a strict criteria for activation of sirens during severe weather. The first and most common criteria that we utilize is a tornado warning being issued by the National Weather Service. In this case, we use the National Weather Service tornado warning polygon to activate zones that are inside that polygon. In addition to tornado warnings issued by the National Weather Service, we can also activate the sirens based on reports of a tornado from our volunteer spotter group, Johnson County ECS. This group of highly-trained spotters has members inside the Emergency Operations Center, sitting with emergency management staff, as well as spotters who are in the field reporting ground conditions to us. In addition to those two methods, we can also activate based on reports given to us by trained public safety officials, as well as at the discretion of the Emergency Management Duty Officer. Now, those 215 sirens can be activated all at once, what we call an all-call, or by zones, depending on the threat. When the sirens are activated, they sound a wail for three minutes, followed by being off for seven minutes. And they are reactivated every 10 minutes for as long as that threat remains in place. So, what that would look like during a severe weather threat is the sirens being activated, sounding for three minutes, followed by being off for seven, reactivated for three minutes, and then off for seven. And we would continue that, that pattern until the threat has either moved out of Johnson County, or that threat has dissipated. Now, it's also important to know that there is no all-clear siren sound, which highlights the importance of seeking shelter and looking for additional information. The sirens make a wail, and we encourage everyone to make, or to use that, that alert to seek more information so they can make better informed sheltering decisions. And with that, I'll turn this back over to Dan.
Thank you. In terms of activating our Emergency Operations Center, there are six of us that work in the Emergency Management Division. And every week of the year, a third of us, two individuals, are on-call for each week. And those are the people that serve as the duty officer that week. And they're responsible for activating the Emergency Operations Center to monitor for severe weather, when there's potential for tornadic activity, and responsible for activating the sirens. We, we have specific criteria on when to do that. And each year, on average, we will activate the EOC to monitor weather about eight to 10 times a year. But we actually have tornadic activity much less frequently than that. When we look back at the last 20 years, there's only been 17 times where we've had tornadic activity, tornado warnings, in Johnson County over 20 years. And looking over that same 20-year period, we've activated the EOC to monitor weather upwards of 200 times. And when we look at the duration of those activations and how long a typical tornado warning happens, it's actually 99% of the time that we spend in the EOC monitoring the weather, there is no tornado warning. But we're there for that 1% of the time when there is a tornado warning. In terms of our timing, the optimal situation for us is when we can activate the EOC two hours prior to potentially tornadic storms entering Johnson County. That gives us enough time to activate our storm spotter group, have their leadership come into the EOC, and then have us deploy spotters throughout the county to their pre-identified locations. We like to have them in place 30 minutes before the potentially tornadic storms enter the county. And that just helps us ensure that those individuals are fresh, settled, and have their bearings before the storms roll in. When we activate the EOC, we notify hundreds of people that we do that. These are our partners at the, in the cities, our first responder partners, the National Weather Service dispatch, and other local, regional, and state partners. And then when we're in the EOC monitoring the storms, we're laser-focused on our primary task of making sure that we sound the sirens when we need to. But we're also involved with other activities, such as gathering information about potential impacts, making sure that our partners have the information that they need to know, sharing critical information to the National Weather Service so they can better inform and shape their warnings that they have. So, those are all the activities that take place when we have a EOC activation for severe weather. Next, I thought it might be helpful to just walk briefly through the last three activations that we have had in Johnson County for tornadoes. I think we'll all probably remember the tornado that impacted Douglas County and Leavenworth County in 2019. This was significantly, there was a lot of significant advance notice about this event. And because of that, we had a large number of, numbers of spotters in the field in Johnson County. And we actually had three that were in Johnson County that watched that tornado. It was about a mile wide, wedge-shaped tornado, roll through Douglas County and Leavenworth County, really only a few thousand feet from the border of Johnson County, but never entered. So, we're thankful for that. In this image here, you can see the red polygons here are the National Weather Service tornado warning polygons. There were three of them issued that touched Johnson County that night. And then the other polygons there are the siren zones. The blue zones are the ones that were activated, and the gray ones were not. The triangle gray zone on the, on the left, on the western side of the county, there actually aren't any sirens in that area, so there was nothing to, to activate. This tornado turned out to be an EF4 tornado, and there was significant destruction related to that. But luckily, there were only 18 injuries. So, relatively, we were very lucky in our region with that situation. Our second-most recent tornadic storm was last year on the Ides of, Ides of March. This popped up in Miami County, and there were two tornado warnings issued in Johnson County for it. You can see that first tornado warning that was touching Miami County as well. We sounded three zones for that. And then the second tornado warning only impacted two zones, so we sounded those. And that ended up being EF0 tornado. Our most recent tornado warning occurred earlier this month on June 8 at 1:21 a.m. This was a very rare event for a number of reasons. I mentioned earlier that over the past 20 years, we've had 17 tornadic events. Well, in 16 of those 17 events, we've had the EOC activated and our staff there to sound the sirens. And that wasn't the case in this situation. Tornadic activity was not expected on the 8th, not by the National Weather Service or our office. And so, we didn't have the EOC activated. But because we know that tornadoes can, and many times do, pop up out of nowhere, we have a plan for that. And that plan is that when we're not in the EOC activated, the Emergency Dispatch Center activates the sirens for us. And that's a procedure that we review every year. It's trained upon, and we exercise it with ECC multiple times every year. This was also rare because this was the shortest-lived tornado- This was also rare because this was the shortest-lived tornado warning that we've ever had in Johnson County. It was less than five minutes long in its entirety, and during that time, ECC activated the outdoor warning sirens, notified JOCO, sent out 40,000 notifications to Johnson Countyans impacted by it, and then we only sounded the sirens one time because it was quickly canceled for Johnson County by the National Weather Service. We take our responsibility related to the sirens very seriously, and every time we have an activation, we do a review. We've definitely been doing that over the past few weeks internally and with the National Weather Service, the cities, ECC, and others, to review that situation and past activations to see if there's anything we need to do to be better prepared for the next time. The reality is, as technology advances, we will likely see more of these brief, smaller tornadoes occur. They can now be detected by radar when just five years ago, National Weather Service didn't really even have the technology to be able to see these types of tornadoes. Luckily, these are usually weak and brief tornadoes, and the damage from the 8th was relatively minor, and there were no injuries, but we know that that won't always be the case. And as I mentioned, you know, at the beginning, we are at risk, and we're actually very lucky in Johnson County. We haven't had a fatality related to a tornado since 1957 with the Ruskin Heights tornado, and that is a real anomaly when you look at other counties. We're very lucky, and we want to make sure that people continue to take tornado safety very seriously. That's why we appreciate all the activities and efforts from the Board of County Commissioners and County Management and Communications Team to echo and amplify our messages that we and our partners share quite often. As Trent mentioned, most importantly, it's that we want people to have multiple ways to receive emergency messages. One great way of doing that is to sign up for notified JOCO if you haven't done that already. Another key message that we try to be relentless of getting out there is that when people do hear the sirens, or they learn of a tornado warning, they should take it seriously, and they should take shelter immediately and seek additional information. And so, those are the messages that we try and get out and make sure that people understand. But again, we thank you for the opportunity to review this and available for any questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. I would encourage any commissioner who's not visited the Emergency Command Center, do so, and Dan and Trent will be glad to elaborate on the system that's in place. We'll take a five-minute break as soon as questions are completed. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Chair. So I know cities are responsible for maintenance in their jurisdictions of their sirens. How do they know that a siren needs to be maintained?
Good question.
And then I have a follow-up question.
Sure. Some of those maintenance activities are ongoing, checks that just happen routinely, but one of the systems we have in place is that today, the majority of the sirens do have a two-way capability, which means that we can receive certain information from those sirens, and twice a day, we send a silent poll to all of the sirens that we can in Johnson County to check on their status, and sometimes it'll communicate back to us that there's an issue, and through our office, we send that information to the city representatives or the siren owners that are in charge of those, and that's one way that they know.
So, yeah, I think you answered my follow-up question, then. So you're notified, or you know from cities, when a siren needs to be maintained or has been maintained, or do they report to you on that or not?
Ultimately, it's their responsibility. We've created, to help with the burden of some of the costs, we've created a system where our office provides additional information to help them make those decisions. So we have awareness on some of them, but not all of the sirens in the county have that ability. And then, of course, also, on the monthly audible test of the sirens, that's also a good indicator.
So, the reason I ask these questions is because I received a couple of emails from my constituents that were worried that their sirens did not go off, and of course, it looks like the zones, they should have gone off. In fact, I believe one in my neighborhood did not go off, and it's definitely within the zone of that it should have gone off, and I didn't know if that was because, again, this siren needed maintenance, or malfunctioned, or, you know, if anyone was aware, or if we know if there were sirens that did not go off that should have gone off.
In the last activation, we're not aware of any that should have gone off and did not, but we always appreciate hearing, getting that feedback, and every time we do, we provide that to the siren owners, and then we provide any information we can to the siren owners to help them better, you know, make the linkages there.
Okay, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Myers, thank you for your question. I would like to phrase it a little bit differently, and we can have this discussion offline, but I'd like to understand the relative merits of having the cities, the decentralized system for the maintenance of this program. It seems interesting, given the criticality of that service.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I was just going to comment, this is not a new issue. I remind the board, this issue came up, Dan, how many, a couple of years ago, maybe three, four now, moving track of time, and we did explore this, this notion of centralizing county control and ownership. Of course, that is an expensive proposition, but one, if the board would so choose to give that direction, we're happy to begin those conversations.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just appreciate the information, and then I can share this information. I've received a lot of calls the last time, and I have to be quite honest, I didn't know all the answers, so I'm learning, so I just really appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am so grateful for Mr. Robison's assistance, especially on this June 8th situation, because that impacted a lot of people in my commission district, and you were extraordinarily responsive and helpful, and like Commissioner Allenbrand said, I learned a lot and was able to share that with people. Couple of, two points. One, to Commissioner Myers' question about whether some of the sirens didn't go off. I've had a number of those questions, and I've referred them to the appropriate person at the city of Overland Park, and actually, I haven't heard of any that actually didn't go off, but one of the things I learned was, it's a whole lot different to hear that siren on a Wednesday morning at 11:00 a.m. when you're alert, the air is clear, and it's very different when it's in the middle of the night and there is storm blowing, you're not going to hear it the same way. So what I, I think a number of people, it did go off, but they didn't hear it in the same way, and that's why, to Mr. Robison's point, it is so important to have those other options, the notified JOCO. I went out and replaced my old weather radio, so that, I think it's really important that people know you can't just count on the sirens. And to that point, I especially want to thank Mr. Robison, because I spent some time last week down in the Emergency Operations Center, and he and I are working on a meeting with members of the deaf and hard-of-hearing community to look at ways that we might be able to better help them in these kinds of situations, because obviously, they don't hear sirens, and there are other ways, we need to hear from them about what they need. So I appreciate your willingness to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Dan, let me ask you this question. About 10, 11 years ago, FEMA allowed a group of, from Johnson County, emergency responders, state of Kansas, and utilities attend a training session at their facilities. Is that, it was most informative and outstanding exercises that we're engaged in. In fact, the last one was where we had to respond to three tornadoes at the same time in Johnson County. Is that a possibility, or is there a restriction by FEMA on when those trainings can occur?
There is. That's a great question, and very timely, because we've participated in that specific IEMC course, where FEMA supports a large number of people from a jurisdiction, I believe around 70, to go to the Emergency Management Institute and go through that training, and it was a great opportunity. I believe it is 2013 that that occurred, and I think it was 10 years before that, that we did it before, and they try to space it out so that all jurisdictions can participate, but we've just been talking about how we're getting to almost that 10-year mark, and it would be great to do that again, so we are looking at that.
Well, I'd suggest you pursue that, so it's very, very good, excellent, excellent course, and so, okay, thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute, excuse me, Ms. Fast.
Yeah, I just wanted, I had talked to you about one of the concerns that happened with Wichita, the tornado for our Spanish-language community and others who don't speak English, and you were going to be meeting with people so that people who don't speak English, you know, get the proper notification. What has happened on that?
Well, we do have, in terms of our, the public education efforts throughout the region in Johnson County, targeted efforts to make sure that all, every group in our community is equally prepared, can be equally prepared. And on the language piece, there are elements of the Everbridge notified JOCO capability that allow for that to be read in different languages, and so we continue to promote that, and the weather radio that many people utilize can be programmed to be heard in different languages as well. So just as was mentioned with the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, we want to continue to build our network and activities with all different groups in Johnson County, make sure that everybody's prepared, and we'll continue to do that.
So the concerns I've heard in my district mission, privilege, that they got the siren after it had passed, was it just, I mean, it happened so quickly, and that was, I guess I just really want to know what to say, because I still get these questions.
Sure. Anytime that there's a tornado warning in Johnson County, we do everything we can to hit that button and have the sirens activate as quickly as possible. As there's more newer technology, those messages will be received at different times. We do everything we can to make it as quickly as possible. On June 8th, it has been recognized that that could be tightened up, that could have been tightened up, and we've had discussions in our office and with ECC about how to do that moving forward. So there will probably always, you'll probably always receive one of those messages before the other, but again, that's why we encourage people to have those multiple ways to receive the message.
Speaking of the activity in June, I'd encourage anybody who has a cell phone. My first warning woke me up was my cell phone. I immediately got up and went towards the TV to turn it on, and the sirens went off. So anyway, multiple opportunities should be available. Okay, thank you very much. We will take a five-minute recess and come back for the conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Start with not returning that million dollars to the Board of County Commissioners. That's the first thing that we would do. If additional funds are needed then, from the general fund, we'll determine that when we've got those bids in hand. So we'll reconcile those shortfalls and come to you with the method to provide, asking the Board of County Commissioners to provide essentially cash out of the general fund to support these Public Building Commission projects. PBC will proceed forward to sell bonds for the planned amount on the household hazardous waste as well as the Lenexa project. Lenexa, moving to that project, $3.9 million project with similar challenges. That is a large piece of property and a larger facility than we needed. It is a, it's very well suited, it's very well situated for a MEDAC station we need to replace. We need to get out of the older facility that the city Lenexa provides to us. This is also a pretty urgent project. The larger size increases some of the cost to just, when you have to do things like repair or replace, put in new HVAC equipment to put the building to use. It's a bigger building, so it takes more money. But that is part of the driver on the cost problems here, but a big piece of it, of course, is at a basic inflation rate that we're struggling with. So that is a project with a range of about 1.2 to 1.5 million shortfall. And again, using that same strategy, the property was purchased for 1.25 million by the BOCC, and our plan would be to ask that the Public Building Commission not reimburse the 1.2. And if there are additional dollars needed, we would take that up again in that reconciliation upon bid date.
A clarifying question. The properties for these projects have already been secured, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so the recommendation is that we go ahead and go out for bids on the improvements that need to be made or the construction that needs to be done and see what the information is that comes back, and then we can make a final decision. Is that right?
That is it, yes.
Is there any action you require today?
No, sir.
All right. Questions? Ms. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Waters, you brought a lot of sunshine to this meeting. I want to thank you for that. You're doing what you're supposed to be doing, and I appreciate that. The question I have, though, with Mr. Waters is, when you do your analysis and, as the chairman points out, go out to the market and see what the, what the real impact is in this neighborhood, hopefully less, but maybe more, will you also include the option of delaying or foregoing those developments, those buildings, to make sure that we are getting the best value? Because the market is fairly volatile, and I don't know what the future holds, but I'm just, just wondering if you will consider that and the impact that will have on taxpayers.
Commissioner, I would say the simple answer is yes, but I do want to elaborate a little. We absolutely have done that, and there's a number of people here in the room who had the same reaction I have as these projects' estimates continue to climb, is good grief, should we pause? These are all three very important projects. They wouldn't have been approved if they weren't. There are life safety, there, we've got one in the way of a major wastewater treatment plant, we've got to do something. So they're all important, but is there going to be a better time to bid? And that is a very diff, right now, the answer in the marketplace, and I was talking with McCarthy Construction, I've talked with others in the last six months here, but I've talked with them just, just this week, there's no one saying that they expect costs to decline. They may slow, they may pause, but we will keep probing the market and looking at that, but at this point in time, the pausing, the concern about pausing is the costs will continue up and will just be a deeper problem.
Thank you. I think we also need to keep in mind the MEDAC facilities are important public safety issues and so, but, you know, those judgments can be made later. Ms. O'Hara?
Oh, thank, thank you. Well, I think that this is a reality check. I, I'm glad that this information was given to us before our, our budget hearing and when we will be making the decisions as to how to allocate our resources. Obviously, this is, this, these price pressures are going to be enormous on our Nelson wastewater plant. When I came into office, the estimates was 425 million, and now it's 574 million, and I'm sure that that's out of date. I mean, this is, this is jaw-dropping, stunning. We are going to have to make some really hard decisions, just like all the residents of Johnson County with inflationary pressures are having to make tough decisions. And all of this is brought to you by government actions on COVID. This is just unconscionable, what we have done to our community, our state, our nation, and now the, the results and the impacts, they're here. And it's going to be really, really, really tough decisions for us, and we're going to have to sharpen our pencils and be willing to make some very difficult decisions because the taxpayers, they're done. They're maxed out. So I just look forward to the, the conversation on our budget for 2023, and I appreciate the information and the clarity, transparency, and thank you.
Okay, well, this information should be no surprise to anybody because these factors that have been at play for several years, this would not be the first time we've had to make challenging decisions. I refer everybody back to the Great Recession of '08 and '09, and challenging decisions were made, correct decisions were made. There were no tax increases when values went down. We made adjustments in workforce, and we used our reserves so that we did not have a negative impact on county services. So there's precedent for all of these decisions we're going to have to make going forward. Any other questions? Ms. Fast?
Yeah, one of the things that you told me I thought was very interesting, that when you look back from your experience the last decade, I mean, the prices of a construction, you know, they, they plateau, but they don't usually go down, they keep rising, and that has been what the county's dealt with for the last 20 years, that construction rarely makes a huge drop. We see continual price increases. I mean, I'll let you talk about, I'm not saying it correctly.
First thing I want to say is thank you for saying that we were just talking about a decade, because I think I was talking about my career at four decades. But I, I have been in the design and construction world directly and indirectly for 40 years and have gone through a number of inflationary cycles in construction. None quite like this, and none back-to-back like this has been. I've seen 13 and 14%, but not two in three years running like this. So it is unprecedented, but in my experience, construction costs, there will be pieces in the industry. There's steel or wood or something else that will go up and down, but overall, it just ticks up. It just finds new plateaus to build from. This may be different, but in my experience, and this is what I'm hearing from the rest of the construction industry, and that, that, that seems unlikely. It seems like it will continue as it has to build upon the new base costs.
Thank you. Ms. Allenbrand, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for your comments, and also Commissioner Ashcraft. Joe, I want to, Mr. Waters, I want to thank you for your leadership and working together with your team. Being a previous business owner and owning various healthcare communities and serving on numerous hospital boards and other boards, I have lived through, and I've seen fluctuation, and I think it just shows your leadership, how you continue to work at, well, it takes a team, so it's not just you, but all your leadership in looking at where do we take a look at the next capital improvement? You know, is it a project that we can wait? This is safety, this is important to the citizens of our county. And again, you know, management, you know, taking a look at why we have reserve funds and why we do the things we do setting on this board and previous commissions. So I just want to thank you. I know it's not easy, but I appreciate the information, so thank you.
Thank you for this update. The news could have been better, but anyway, thank you for sharing that information with us. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Joe, thank you, and I know Janice Phillips from Facilities and other members of Joe's team as the interim Facilities Director and Assistant County Manager are helpful in this process, so thank you. Last item, "I love my county because," think about how you would finish that phrase. There's an art project, a collaboration with NACO, the National Association of Counties, and the Arts Council and Johnson County Government. Sarah Van Landite is here, and I'll ask her to come forward to highlight this program, but it's focused on kids and a contest, 18 and under, and I'll let her share more. So think about how you would complete that sentence. Sarah?
Thanks, Penny. Sarah Van Landite, Executive Director for the Arts Council of Johnson County. I am the bearer of happy news, I hope. So as Penny mentioned, the Arts Council of Johnson County is teaming up with Johnson County Government, including Johnson County Park and Rec, the museum, and the library for the "I Love My County Because" contest. This is a national program that's a partnership between NACO and Americans for the Arts. The contest runs now through October 7th, 2022, and it invites students K through 12, 18 and under, to create an artwork that depicts why they love their county, specifically county services. And it's a great way to, to connect local arts students and local government and civic education. So we're excited to work with the county, excited to promote it, and I believe things are launching this week. We won't get to see the artwork, but we're hoping that folks will participate in the social media campaign where they'll use the hashtag "I love my county," and we'll be able to share that out on our various social media channels. So I am happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask something?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you for the bright, shining smile and the dimples, and I'm excited about this. So will it be broke down? Because I want to let my grandkids know.
Joe has nice dimples.
Yeah. Poor guy. Anyway, so is it, is it broken down between age groups?
Um, I, that is a great question. I believe, I'm trying to remember the guidelines in my head. I believe it's just kind of a blanket 18 and under. When students submit artwork, I think they need to fill out a form and include their age, their name, their contact information, and their county, and their art teacher, if they have one that they're working with, but other than that, it's pretty, pretty broad.
Well, thank you. I think it's a great summer, you know, project for kids, so.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other items?
18 and under, I just checked.
Yeah, I saw that. I didn't know if they'd like break it up into age groups or not, but.
Well, thank, thank you, Sarah, and Chairman, that's it for my report.
All right, thank you. We'll turn to commission comments. Before I ask for individual comments, I have one. Historically, once a year, we have a NACO annual convention, and we need to elect a delegate, an alternate delegate to the business meeting. And the recommendation, I believe Mr. Myers is going to attend that conference, but he will leave before the business session, so the recommendation is that the county manager be our voting delegate with Mr. Thompson as the alternate. Do those designees have any comments to make? I guess not. And Ms. Allenbrand?
I do have a motion when you're ready for it, Mr. Chair.
That's fine.
I move to approve Penny Postal Ferguson, County Manager, as the voting delegate, and Murray Thompson, Assistant County Manager, as the alternate delegate for the 2022 National Association of Counties NACO Conference Annual Business Meeting.
Second, Commissioner Fast.
Allenbrand made the motion, Commissioner Fast seconded the motion to approve the nomination of the county manager as our delegate, voting delegate, and Mr. Thompson as the alternate. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll. Excuse me.
Yeah, I do, I do, I have a question.
Yeah.
So these would be non-binding recommendations that you're voting on at the National Association of Counties, is that correct?
Well, the National Association of Counties always has a business session, and items come before the entire NACO organization as to practices and policies of that organization.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, but it, it gives me a little bit of pause to have non-elected officials making these, making these votes for, for us. I was just, these are non-binding. I, I'm a big local control person.
Then you're, are you, can you go? Yeah, why don't you go?
You can, you can.
We'd love to have you make the vote.
And, and, and participate. Usually, it's, it involves election of officers, that's one of the big items.
My, my, my comment, my comments are meant to just focus on the, on the fact that we need to be focused on local control. Yes, we need to go and visit with other organizations, but this, this rush to regionalism and these national associations, I just think that we just need to kind of just tap the brakes a little bit and focus on, focus on Johnson County and what is best for our county and not be rushing headlong into the latest quote-unquote fad of management, et cetera.
Well, again, I, I would, I would, I would simply say there's, the National Association of Counties has been very, very active on all counties' behalf and on Johnson County in that, in that contingent. I'm not going to be able to go this year, but I've gone several times, and there's always interaction with other counties across the country, and there are committees, action committees, that you can get involved in. So if anybody wants to, if any commissioner wants to become involved in those, the door's open. So the motion is before us. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers is absent now. Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor. Mr. Myers is absent, motion carried. Turning to commission comments, Ms. Fast, Commissioner Fast.
Yeah, this, on Monday is the annual Prairie Village, Village Festival. I will be there at a booth, so please join us if you're in Northeast. Also wanted to say, after not having the fireworks in Northeast, Roland Park, Westwood, and Fairway have come together. They weren't able to get fireworks because of the shortage, and they did, so everyone's really excited. It's on the, at Bishop Miege. It is on Sunday night at nine o'clock. Shawnee Mission, Indian Mission has seating, if you would like to reserve seating. So it's really a wonderful event in the Northeast on Sunday night, and then Monday's the Village Festival.
Thank you. Ms. Allenbrand?
Mr. Chair, I know this is a shocker, but I have no comments. Whoa.
Ms. Ashcraft?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Hanslick?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you to the Friends of the Overland Park Arboretum for a wonderful STEMS event last weekend. Luckily, the weather was not too hot, and we were able to be there to raise money to support that wonderful amenity in our community. I will be participating in the Lenexa Fourth of July Parade on Monday, and I'm currently waiting for my order of 800 small flags that we'll be distributing during that parade. So look forward to seeing people.
All right, thank you. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes. I am going to revisit the issue of the annexation dispute with Edgerton's narrow corridor, and I believe that there is some update from our chief legal counsel on this.
Well, I think you were all copied with a letter from Edgerton officials in regards to the.
Correct, but I believe that there's.
Excuse me, excuse me, please. And so I think the legal department has also done additional research, and so, Ms. Trent, if you'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Peg Trent, Chief Counsel. After the last meeting, our legal department had an opportunity to research some of the litigation that was discussed during the meeting. Also, we were in receipt of a letter from the mayor from the city of Edgerton. There was a court case that is surrounding, and I think Commissioner O'Hara has discussed in the previous board meetings, about an annexation that occurred in the city of Edgerton. Specifically, there were three pieces of litigation that were filed. We're not positive whether the other two dealt with the specific issue which Commissioner O'Hara is addressing about the narrow corridor section, but one of them did address that, and that is what the mayor was discussing. Essentially, that particular piece of legislation was, pardon me, case, was filed by Protect Rural JoCo LLC and several individuals, and back on June 7th, it was dismissed, but there was some information provided as to the reason it was dismissed, and it was dismissed, not ruling on the annexation itself, but basically clarifying that the individuals who brought that action did not have standing to bring that action. Since it was a consensual annexation, it required either the city or those parties who consented to that annexation to bring it forward. I believe that at this point, there is a question or discussion, it may have been, but it has not been clarified, of whether the Attorney General has authority or standing, if you will, to bring an action related to any concerns the citizens may have regarding that annexation. At this point, I believe that that is what was the purpose of the motion is for, to get that request to the AG to bring that action. There is another pending action involving the same organization, Protect Rural JoCo LLC, and those same individuals, I believe, and it was about a rezoning challenge and challenging at least one annexation. We're not positive it's the one we're talking about with the narrow corridor. In that one, discovery is ongoing, and that case is still open, but, you know, other than that, that's what we were able to determine, and the mayor from Edgerton wanted to make sure the record reflected that it, there was no ruling as to whether it was legal or illegal, just about standing.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Having a conversation with the legal department and, and the city of Edgerton with the additional cases still pending, I think it's inappropriate for us to interfere in that legal process. So do you have a motion, Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, yes, I do, and yes, I am, have been, excuse me, focused on the narrow corridor issue, which, that was dismissed because of lack of standing, and I think it's important for the entire community to have this clarified, and I, I have a motion that our chief legal counsel has given me. I move the BOCC to request the AG's office to take action on or against the narrow corridor issue of the Edgerton annexation due to the increase of interstate truck traffic and use of 199th Street is in violation of car nap.
Well, I think with the additional legal information that we have, the additional case is to be still pending and undecided, and as I understand, Judge Vannell's opinion has not yet been published, but I think our decision made last week should continue to stand. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick.
Excuse me, do I hear a second to the motion? There is no second, the motion failed. Thank you. Any other items? Ms. O'Hara?
Um, I, again, I just want to emphasize that our budget process, we're really, we're really going to have to focus as to how we're going to be real allocating our resources with these huge inflationary pressures. Again, because the residents of this county absolutely cannot handle any higher taxes. I have, I was at a store, and I was visiting with the cashier, and I said, introduced myself, running for chair, appreciate your consideration. She said, well, what are you? And I said, well, I'm conservative Republican. She said, well, I'm a Democrat, and thank God you're running because I can't afford taxes any higher. She said, my house payment, three years ago, was of $1,080 a month, and now it's $1,400 a month, and she had to get a second job. And her, her comment was, Johnson County no longer wants people like me in the county. So this is, this is really serious. I mean, we are at a crisis situation, and I just want to encourage my colleagues to refocus and make sure that we really, really, really look at every expenditure with, with a sharp pencil. Thank you.
Well, my experience, since I've been on the commission, those considerations are always valued and discussed at budget time, and will continue to be so. Other comments?
Mr. Chair, I think Peg Trent had something to say.
No, I just wanted to clarify the last motion, that I was directed to prepare that motion. I just wanted to clarify that, but nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, just a couple of items, this is, pardon, did you have a comment? Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, repeat what I had said last week, that there, there is a reason why we have a process to put items on agenda review. In, in very rare circumstances have we found that there are times when we should accept motions during the commission comments. I am never comfortable voting on something that I have not been able to fully explore and understand and get input on, and so I really discourage commissioners from trying to make motions during commissioner comments, no matter what they are about, because it's, it's not transparent, it does not give the commissioners the opportunity to fully understand the, the issues, and I would, I would not support that except in extremely rare circumstances.
Okay, other comments? Ms. Fast?
Yeah, it's also not transparent for the residents. Residents didn't know this motion was coming. I mean, under Robin's rules, you put it on the agenda. These motions should be put on agenda review so that residents have a week to see it. They should be put on, on the agenda and the meeting starts. That is what the rules are. I mean, the lack of transparency for residents is just appalling to me.
Other comment?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Well, since district commissioners have no way of getting issues on the agenda, and this, and.
You made a motion at the start of the meeting or at agenda review. You do have a process.
And, and then, and, and then on this particular one, I believe that time is of essence, and we are in recess until July the 21st.
You could have made a motion when our meeting started today and put it on the agenda.
The, the motion that was made has failed.
Thank you.
And so we will continue. I have a couple of items. Number one, our next two meetings, July 7 and July 14, will not occur. The July 4th holiday, our, our county offices will be closed. So enjoy the time off and enjoy the Fourth of July. It's always a great event. There are several activities occurring in the county on that day, so there's plenty of opportunity to engage in that celebration. So with that, that concludes our agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.